I know, I'm always on there for late arrival.
Maybe I want to amend.
Traffic today. Took four minutes.
All right, we'll call to order the Planning Commission meeting of Thursday, September 18th, 2025. If we can start with roll call.
Chair Dennison.
Here.
Vice Chair Simcock.
Here.
Commissioner Brennan.
Here.
Commissioner Moran.
Here.
Commissioner Yu.
Here.
Chair, you have the quorum.
Thank you. I will look for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next up, we have the approval of the minutes of the August 21st, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. Does anybody have any proposed edits? Hearing none. I will seek a motion to approve as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of August 21st as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstaining.
Motion carries. Next up is our council liaison report. You're presenting to the audience now.
I can do this. Greetings, Chair Dennison and members of the commission. Three things tonight. I think you'd be interested to know that, maybe you already know that the ordinance 1484, amending the discretionary demolition permit, went through second reading in the last council meeting and has been adopted. And the previous meeting where we had the first reading and finished it, we took time discussing it at the end, and every council member was glowing about the work you all did, especially our subcommittee of Chair Dennison, Member Brennan. And we just want you to know that we acknowledge the hard work you did over the summer to get that done. I think that's going to help our citizens a lot. So, kudos. Got some good news on bears. If you were watching or not, from our police chief in our last meeting, the bear intrusions are way down, meaning, I think there were, there were none in the previous 10 days prior to our meeting compared to 61 in June. So, I think the depredation of the bear back in late June had an impact on that. There are plenty of bear encounters. They're still out there. We just haven't had a, a large number of intrusion. So, that's really good news. And then I was just on the Library Ad hoc Committee meeting on Wednesday, and the news is really good there. They're making lots of progress. They've got the roof on. They're doing drywalling now. They're putting tile up in the bathrooms, pulling wire. It's starting to take shape. And saw some of the pictures that were brought to the meeting by the Vertex people. And it's very impressive. So, everybody at the meeting was very, we had some up and down meetings, but this one was really excited and positive. And they're slightly under budget at this point. We don't know if that's going to stay that way or not, but that was also good news. So, that's all I've got for you tonight. Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up is community input. At this time, any person may address the Planning Commission concerning an item that is not on the agenda. The commission welcomes your attendance and participation. When addressing the commission, please begin by providing your name and address for the record. Please keep comments to no more than three minutes to assure an orderly and timely meeting. All right, next up, public hearing municipal code text amendment 25-03, amending chapter 17.72, signs of title 17, zoning of the Sierra Madre Municipal Code. Does staff have a presentation?
We do not have a PowerPoint presentation. It will be oral. So, this is for the Planning Commission to consider the proposed amendment to the municipal code, chapter 17.72. At the last city council meeting, city council provides staff with very clear directions, and we can load the Word doc, Word document on the screen for you to follow. Our deputy city attorney will start with definitions. That was one of the requests from the city councils to add definitions of parkway and public right-of-way.
The need to define parkway was because there is a blanket prohibition on signs in the right-of-way, and both parkway and right-of-way are used throughout the code in other sections, but were not defined within 17.72 on signs. So, here we've defined parkway to mean the portion of the right-of-way between the traveled roadway and sidewalk, or where there is no sidewalk, that portion of the right-of-way between the traveled roadway and the private property line. So, essentially, it's that median between the road and someone's property, or where there's the road and the sidewalk. And then underneath that right-of-way is defined as, meaning any of the following that are controlled, used, or dedicated for use by the public and located within the city's jurisdictional limits. Streets, roadways, highways, avenues, lanes, alleys, sidewalks, parkways, and similar public property. And there's no, like, particular state code section that this correlates to. This is just like a generally used definition of right-of-way.
Does parkway, do you have to be able to park in that?
No, it's typically grass and/or with trees on it. It's like that buffer between where you park and a sidewalk usually.
So, where you park is on the traveled roadway?
Let's say for us in Sierra Madre, because we don't have like, like medians, right? But it would be between the curb and the sidewalk, right? So, typically landscape, trees, or.
Okay. Just kind of the, the parkway portion. So, I, I was wondering whether the roadway included where you park. So, the roadway includes where you park. So, this is between where you park and the sidewalk.
Correct.
And so, that is part of, parkways in right-of-way is the same definition, not?
A right-of-way includes a parkway.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. But you, okay.
There are other code sections that define parkway, including 10.04130, which is related to vehicles and traffic, which defines parkway as that portion of the street other than a traveled roadway. This is just a more robust but congruent definition of that.
And so, basically, anything that isn't on a road and is owned by the city will now be a right-of-way?
This definition is a little bit more specific in that we are outlining, like, where it typically is, being between the sidewalk and the roadway, or the roadway and the property line if there's not a sidewalk there.
So, then how does an alley fit into that definition?
An alley, I believe, would be a roadway.
Not a parkway.
Not a parkway.
But it's part of the right-of-way.
Yeah.
Yes. Correct.
Because in an alley, it goes alley and then property, right? So, there's nothing sort of in between those.
Then there would be like no parkway in that situation?
On right-of-way, what would the center median be?
Whether that's considered part of the roadway itself or a parkway, I'm not entirely sure, but either way, it is part of the right-of-way.
Should we add median, medians to right-of-way? I mean, we only have one. I know, I know we only have one, but it's, it's pretty big.
I have no problem with adding that to right-of-way, if you would like that in there.
I just think it would.
I agree. Otherwise, we're going to exclude that big chunk.
Right.
Coming into Sierra Madre.
You'd have median in the definition.
Oh, that, we have that one, and we have San Anita. The, the north of Grandview is Sierra Madre. A big, that's a huge parkway.
All right.
Yep.
Median.
Yeah, so you're right. We should add median. Sorry, I guess we should have done that later in deliberation. This is really the presentation side. So, we'll, we will revisit that. We got ahead of ourselves.
If you want to keep scrolling, we can.
Can I ask one question since we're on this topic? Did, I know you mentioned in the, there was mention in the preparation materials about municipal code 5.32.200 has its own definition. It's, it's generally the same, but some of the verbiage is different. Is there a thought to making that consistent, or I think, I think it captures all of the same elements of the roadway and the parkway, et cetera, but any thought to trying to make that consistent, or?
The verbiage in 5.32.200, it's related to tape, cable television systems, and I believe that the intent behind the verbiage there is more specific to, like, where concerns over like eminent domain and things might come into play that just aren't relevant in this situation. So, I think it was more that we wanted it to be for its end use more applicable than just adopting that definition. Do you have a preference? It's not technically incorrect. The, would you like me to read you the definition that we have?
No, I, well, I have it up.
Okay.
I know, I know the intent, I know the intent of including that there in the code is different, right? It's specific to cable TV. It's just, it's, it is the same. It's defining the, the same geography for a different purpose, but.
And the.
I don't, I don't, I don't feel strongly about it.
Okay. And I think the listed, like, itemized examples within that, like streets, roadways, highways are all the same as what we included.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Except if we add median.
Right.
Then it would not be consistent.
Yeah.
So, as I mentioned, there's a blanket prohibition under the prohibited signs, or was for, which section is that on? Uh, C for signs on public property or right-of-way unless otherwise authorized. We're not changing the meaning there. We're just changing the words because it didn't read very well. 17.20020 J6 is for garage sale and yard sale signs. And then, again, section H, we're just changing small grammatical errors, and same with I, and then J, adding that they're, for signs that are not public facing. Were the only changes here.
You're prohibiting signs that are not public facing?
Correct. And that was at the request of city council. I wasn't at that meeting, but Alex conveyed to me that that was a request.
I was just confused what a non-public facing sign would be like.
Yeah, what's an example of why this is important, I guess?
You know, that's a great question. I'm not entirely sure besides, like, for aesthetic purposes or what the reason was. I could, I'll reach out to Alex and ask for more feedback on what the purpose behind public facing was.
Like, if you had election signs that were facing your house.
We could probably sneak some insider information and.
We have a liaison here. Would you be willing to convey what the public facing portion was regarding?
I just don't recall.
Okay.
Seems just a little weird. I've never really seen.
So, I can't have my Dodger sign not facing the public or something?
Yeah, but like, is that so much of a problem either? I don't know. Am I allowed to ask questions in this section, or?
Yeah, this is, this is question.
I do not want to, in any sense prohibit this because I find it very delightful, but I'm just checking whether it would be technically prohibited under this. But in Hastings, Hastings Ranch isn't in our city, though.
It's not.
But imagine Hastings Ranch was in our city. They have, you know, a couple of displays with like these moving signs and stuff like that. Would those be prohibited under this?
I'm not familiar with what you're referring to. There are California Department of Transportation regulations about content of signs and format and things that would be distracting to a driver. And so, I'm not sure in that context if that would prohibit this, depending on the location, but I'm not familiar with your example.
If you're in the area around, kind of, the holidays, Hastings Ranch has, like, on every street, these, kind of, signs up everywhere to, like, indicate each street has a theme for Christmas, or the holidays, or other things like that. And then some of the houses go all out, and they have, like, I don't know, like, a billboard of moving LEDs that synchronizes with music, and it's quite elaborate. But I think that would be classified as a sign and therefore prohibited here. But it's not in our city anyway, and I don't think I've seen that in Sierra Madre.
Perhaps under the first section, if it were rotating, moving, flashing, changing, under those.
Yeah, and it's animated as, as well.
But you're right, during the holidays, this could restrict a lot of.
Yeah, there's a lot, because I mean, there are a few places during the holidays that do have kind of boxy things that are signed, like, with animations. I don't think anyone would, like, go ahead and report it, or whatever. I mean, maybe one of the neighbors would if they found it obnoxious, but just something to consider whether we are prohibiting some of those holiday spirit.
That's a good point.
Signs. And it may fall under temporary signs, which we'll get to next.
Okay, if there's a temporary, okay, yeah. These are not permanent signs typically. They're like for three weeks or something.
So, is the intent of C in 1772.020, are people allowed to put signs on public property?
No.
No signs at all?
Well, we'll get to, there are sections that prohibit attaching it to, like, telephone poles, public property, et cetera. And this is specifically because in C, given the parkway that we just defined, there were instances in which people were putting election signs in those grass buffers, and that is prohibited. The only type of sign that would be allowed in that type of a parkway is a yard sale, garage sale sign as permitted under 17.20.
Okay. And that will be the conclude, that'll be the exhaustive list of what people can put into the private property? I mean, to the public property?
In that part, correct. Yeah.
Yard sale signs.
I guess that'd be a temporary sign.
Yeah.
So, we are recommending removing all of the regulations related to both election signs and political signs. This is coming from concerns over content-based restrictions and First Amendment rights. Restrictions on speech that are content-based are presumptively unconstitutional and are subject to strict scrutiny, which is a really high threshold to reach. And to be justified, they have to be narrowly tailored to serve a compelling state interest, and there has been case law that has found such regulations are not narrowly tailored to any compelling interest, including aesthetics, et cetera. So, all of our code sections that single out political signs or election signs are facially content-based, which subjects them to that same standard, and is why we are getting rid of those sections. They would still fall under the purview of the regulations for all other signs, but we're just not singling them out as what type of content the sign is for.
But they'll be part of the not allowed on public property signs?
Correct.
Okay.
And I will just note that the same rationale for why election and political signs can't be singled out based on their content hypothetically could apply to our same provisions about garage and yard sales, since that is content-based. However, city council is aware of that and has chosen not to give direction to amend our code sections related to garage and yard sales, and it's a fairly low-risk thing to leave in there versus political and election signs is a little bit more contentious. And Claire, did you want to speak to these sections?
So, the rest of the section is more a clean-up sections for the residential zone. Instead of identify each zone, we group them together and just created a section for residential zone, and then another section for residential zone with special conditions. Those are the overlay zone. We feel like it's redundant because those overlay zone already zoned in commercial or residential. So, they already have an underlining zone, so those overlay zone is not necessary. For example, the residential entrepreneur overlay zone. So, we consolidate all together, so it's more concise and it's not redundant over time.
So, that's, I believe, can we keep going?
Actually, can we go back? I was. We have so, so, so many different versions of residential zones. Anytime I see a specific residential zone inserted into the code, I like to understand why we're making that choice. And so, under 1772.050, I see that we've inserted the R3 zones, right there at the bottom of the page. So, why is it that this applies to one of our seven residential zones, or however many different residential zones we have?
So, the section 040 is just for a single-family zone, and then the, the next section, 050, is the residential zone with special conditions, which are the R3, and it might have the overlay zone, commercial zone on top of it. So, those areas, we give the provision for them to put the business sign on, on the property versus the residential zone, the single-family zones. They're tho, they are not allowed.
And so, then what about the other residential zones? Don't we have, like, the, what, R20 and R30?
Right. So, the, the residential zones include the R1, R2, R3, R330, R340, and then the residential canyon, residential hillside. So, we group them all together into one residential zone. Simply, it's more or less for the single-family and the multifamily residence, residential area only, without special conditions. And then the next section would be the residential areas with the overlay with special conditions that they can have home occupation. They could turn into a account, accounting office, or dentist. The, the one along Baldwin Avenue and Sierra Madre Avenue. So, those will have the special conditions that they can put in place and directional and promotion. Sometimes they have A-frames and other signs would be allowed in those zone.
So, what code will apply to R2, R30, and R40?
It will be the 040 section.
So, we have one for the single-family, one for residential that's not R3, and then we have an R3 one? Is that what you're saying?
No, so all the residential zone are in 04, section 04, subsection 040. So, 040 covers R1, residential canyon, residential hillside, R2, and R3 zones. Without, all, all our zones.
Oh, okay. I thought, I'm sorry. I thought you said, I thought I heard you say single-family. I thought I heard you say single-family. That's, that's what I'm getting caught up.
Single-family is included in the residential zone. So.
Right, right, right.
It's all in there.
No, understood.
The, it.
Okay.
The lingo, yeah.
So, 40 is all residential, and then 50 is just, if you're R3, you can.
If you're also R3, you get an extra couple things.
So, here was where I was referring to the temporary signs section, and as you mentioned, the holiday decor, that would probably fall under this section. There is language about it not being, I'm trying to find which section it is.
Animated.
Blinking or something to that.
Illuminated or reflective.
Illuminated or reflective. And then to your question earlier about public property, there is a provision in there about it not being nailed to trees or public utility poles as well.
Well, don't let the realtors know we're going to pass this, huh?
And that probably, we can conclude our presentation portion if you'd like to move.
Are there any questions? Did that cover the direction that city council?
Oh, they did have one more request, which was that we consider the total number of signs on private property allowed. It's not currently addressed in the ordinance or staff report, but if we would like to discuss that, that was another consideration that they brought up.
But there was a limitation of six and then up to 18 or something, right? Isn't there?
That was about, I believe.
Is that the temporary one?
Like, the total square footage.
Right.
Area. So, hypothetically, you could break that down into what the number limit would be then, but we don't have a different.
You don't have to reach the six each sign, so you could have a bunch of signs that are.
Yeah.
Is a thought, like, I haven't seen this in Sierra Madre, but I think I've seen it a couple of places where there's, like, someone's yard that has, like, 50 election signs or something like that.
Right. And because this gives aggregate area, it would limit that situation anyway. But I guess hypothetically, if you had a bunch of tiny signs, you could still get to that same amount of square footage. And so, that's where we didn't add anything about giving a number limit, because at the end of the day, it's still the aggregate would be the same either way. But if you felt that.
Yeah, if you, if, if you have tiny signs, people can't read them anyway, so you're not going to want to have that many. I don't know.
Do we know, anybody know what a typical political sign is? Is it like two, two feet by three feet?
Like, it's like.
Yeah, they're like two by three, yeah.
So, you could have three at 18 feet.
Yeah.
Seems like a.
Yeah, three to five or whatever.
That's perfect. We only allow three people to run simultaneously for council. It's like it was written for council.
Right, right.
What if it's the same sign twice? Is that?
Still falls in.
I think the aggregate is a, is a nuanced way to.
Yeah, I, I feel like the aggregate, it's fine, yeah.
Well, sorry.
You can pick for one.
We'll, we'll talk about it in a minute.
Not right now.
We're so anxious to jump ahead, yeah. All right, any other questions for staff or council? All right, at this time, any person may address the planning commission concerning this specific item on the agenda. The commission welcomes your attendance and participation. When addressing the commission, please begin by providing your name and address for the record. Please keep comments to no more than three minutes to assure an orderly and timely meeting. Hearing, no comment? We'll bring it back for deliberation. Who'd like to start?
I'll start. Um, I, I have one thing, I, I, it's kind of because of my, maybe the, it's H in seventeen seventy-two one ninety, temporary signs. Signs shall not be placed within ten feet from, from each other or within five feet of the shared line. I, I have no problem with the five feet of the shared line, but as somebody that has about twenty feet of frontal road, I could put one fine. So I, I, I'm just curious if there was a reason.
Pick wisely.
We had, yeah, I mean, we, we had the ten feet. Um, if we can only have six or, you know, whatever number of square feet, um, is that good enough? Cause some of the lots of the canyon, I mean, they're, they're so narrow that it's, it's gonna be restrict, you, you won't be able to probably get three signs up if you wanted to put three signs, so.
I think, I, I personally like the five feet from the property line, but I don't, I don't have any reason to think they have to be ten feet apart.
I mean, you put them too close together and you can't read them, so, I mean, that's.
So if your fence is on the property line, you can't really put it on your fence then?
Correct. My only other thought with not having them next to each other is that in theory that you could make one big sign by having them run into each other, even if they were separate signs, and I don't know if it was trying to rid that possibility.
But you could still make a big single sign as long as it fits within the area.
Right.
Yeah, and it's still aggregate, right? So as long as they don't exceed the aggregate.
Yeah, I could duct tape the back of the signs together and say it's one sign.
Yeah, I mean, if you have a hundred yards of frontage and you write a six-inch-high sign, you could run it the whole way, right? But just don't exceed the aggregate.
Some other cities that their code does prohibit, like based on size per sign. And I think that was why this maybe was phrased that way, but I see your point, and I don't necessarily think that if we're not giving a limit on the size of a sign, that that is irrelevant.
Does everybody recommend striking that? Okay.
But not the five-feet part.
Right.
That's good.
So it should read, signs shall not be placed.
Within five feet.
Within five feet from any shared property line.
Shared property.
Do we wanna make it?
Door property.
Then your front yard is not a shared property, or I guess it's.
Oh, yeah, it's just side yards. So you're, you're seeing them get them right on your neighbors.
Right, you can't have an arrow pointing.
Right.
To your neighbor with the, something on the sign.
I, I once toured a house for sale and the house next to it had a bunch of signs complaining what a butt-head their neighbor was. Like, I've talked one fifteen signs. So this would prohibit that, but.
Maybe we should leave some room for creativity. I like.
Right.
All right, I think that looks right. Great. Anything else?
Was temporary defined, I, I just thought of that.
I don't think temporary was defined. Unless it was defined and.
Do we have a, do we do have temporary si- uh temporary sign is defined?
Yeah, but it doesn't say what temporary means. Like, does that mean one month, two months?
Right, so what is temporary? It's temporary five years? I mean, if we don't have a, if we don't define temporary.
The only um provision that I know that defines that is that if it's related to an event, it must be taken down within ten days after that event. And that's within the temporary sign section. Um, I'm just double-checking right now whether we have any other timeframes.
Oh, there we go, the last one, temporary, ten days following.
But that doesn't define it for all of the subcases.
Right, so you could have, but do we care? A temporary sign basically means that it's not like permanently affixed to something.
Right.
Well, to me, it more means like temporary and temporal, like it's only up for a certain period of time. Not that it's not fixed to something.
Or until it deteriorates, is that the temporary?
Well, the only thing we're doing is taking it out of the parkway, right? I mean, that, cause we can have a, a, whatever sign preserve Sierra Madre or something.
Okay, yeah.
Sign in your yard, but you couldn't have that in your parkway.
Okay, it does define it here. This, I, I just had in my head interpreted it as being like in length of time, but here they're deciding, defining it as um.
Non-permanent.
Not, not.
Yeah, it's the material.
The material. So it's defined.
I don't particularly. Yeah, I'm not particularly concerned if people wanna put the.
Just that that sentence doesn't make as much sense anymore because. Or.
Well, it does, I guess, I guess what it's trying, or at least my take on it might be, is if you have a sign that has one of your beliefs, you can leave it up as long as you want. But if your sign is, uh, get, buy a ticket for the whiskey tasting that's happening this Saturday, I don't wanna see that the rest of the year.
Yeah, so, but in, in this case, the sentence, now that it's removed for a business, it's item intended to draw attention to or provide information. But attention to what? It doesn't really say anymore.
I think it's just saying provide general information.
To an event or, like.
In general.
Right now, temporary sign is any sign.
Or provide.
Intended to draw attention or provide information.
Anything is providing information.
Yeah, so it just seems like.
So maybe remove the or provide information?
But we still have to say attention to what? Could you just get rid of the two and just say to draw attention?
Yeah, but all signs intend to draw attention.
If we're trying to get rid of for a business, we gotta get rid of the rest of that. Or other in, item intended to draw attention to or provide information for a business is the phrase. I think that should. If we're trying to get rid of that. And, right?
Can we just put a period after advertising display?
A little bit, but it also then says temporary sign means any sign, comma. So then temporary signs are all signs.
I, I don't agree with that, but I, if we wanna get rid of the back part of that sentence, do you recommend putting a period after advertising display?
Yeah.
Does that work for everybody?
Yeah, there should be a word after advertising.
Display, yeah.
Oh, display.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, display.
Add display, yeah.
In some other sections, we leave just some sort of catch-all such as or similar item, do you want to leave something that captures more than what's listed there, or are we comfortable with listing?
I don't think that this was what we were being directed to spend much time on, so I don't, I'm not, I don't think we're fixing a problem that exists today.
Okay.
Oh, is plexiglass need to be capitalized?
I think it's a.
Is it, is that a trick? Is that like Kleenex?
I think it's like Xerox.
It just seems kinda out of place.
And it'll.
I mean, I'm fine with whatever the definition is. I just don't think that this definition really makes much sense, but as long as temporary sign is defined, I'm happy. And we can move on.
All right, do you have anything else, Pat? Sorry, Commissioner. Anybody else?
I'm good.
I was just gonna mention, um, I appreciate council's input on the election and political uh components of, of the current code and removing that. To be honest, on my, on my first read of this and looking at the issues, I was mildly surprised, but when I took a step back and thought about that and the First Amendment issues there, I think it's a excellent move and it, it makes things consistent and um so I, I just appreciate that. I think it was a really great, uh, really great change. The only thing I don't, I'm not sure that, in addition to that, I'm not sure we agreed, or maybe we did agree about adding median into the parkway definition. Was that agreed?
Uh, yeah, I think it was inserted.
That's all I have.
Commissioner Moran?
I, I'm happy.
Um, there were some questions that were raised in the packet about what the city council wanted some suggestions on, and I don't know if this code was ever going to answer it, and so I just wanted to confirm with staff that that, that wouldn't be the purview of this code, like who maintains the parkways?
So uh, property owners are obligated to maintain the parkway, although it is city property.
Is that in this code or that's in some other code?
Um, let me find this section. I believe it is within our code.
But not within this section.
No, it's in.
No, it's in ten, eight, two-ten, yeah.
Imposes an obligation on adjacent property owners to maintain shrubbery, trees, et cetera, in parkways. And similarly, um sixteen point three two point one five oh.
Yes, the city won't allow you, or the city requires you to trim the trees, but the minute you wanna remove it, they get to prohibit that. It's an interesting dichotomy.
Should put that on a political sign.
And stick it in the right of way.
On the right of way.
The trees.
Okay, so then that answered that the homeowner's right to use the parkway, so signs was really the part that um, that that we were working on, and so we've answered all the questions that the city council wanted. Okay. Like to commend the staff for the hard work on, on this. It's uh always nice to clean up code. We, we spent a long time not touching code. I feel like we went almost eighteen months without any code amendments, so I'm glad that we're able to get back in here and clean stuff up, so thank you for all that hard work. It looks good to me and I appreciate the commission's input on it. So I guess I will solicit a motion to approve proposed amendment to Sierra Madre Municipal Code, Chapter seventeen dot seven two, signs as amended live from the dais.
I'll make a motion to approve, um, where is it? I don't have my glasses. Municipal Code text amendment, uh, twenty-five oh three, amending Chapter seventeen seventy-two signs of Title seventeen zoning of the Sierra Madre Municipal Code.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Can I just ask that they come back to us with the definition of that last one regarding the property or the sign not facing the public, right, or, or something?
Yeah, yeah, that'd be it.
Just to.
I reached out to Alex and he replied to me that that was a staff addition as he recalls.
Yes, staff.
I think that is a catch-all for um a sign that is placed in commercial area that is not advertising. So it's a cash hall for any proposed sign that is not for the business itself. Um, that is not public-facing. It's more a artwork or a desire of the property owner, and that would be the idea behind it.
I mean, I guess you could have like, I don't know, like the Creative Arts Center or something like that. Has a lot of art on property that wants to put up like a big art thing that faces inward instead of outward.
Like, uh, what's the salon lunch? Is that what it's called? Where they have that grass out there, they could put a sign in the front facing inward, right?
But that's prohibited?
Now.
Now it is.
If they wanted a sign facing inward that said like, don't forget to upgrade your package or something like that when you're buying services here.
Or if they put signs on the inside of the, what, the three-two-two or the dining that advertised inward, I think that would be one.
I haven't really seen it done, but I guess now you can't do it, so, oh, well.
Yeah, you can't do it now, so.
Okay.
All right. Next up, Planning Commission reports. Do any planning commissioners have anything to report?
Um, I just was gonna report, I went to the Alverno Community Meeting on Tuesday night and it went very smoothly. Um, our, I, I, our police chief is in the midst of getting his office remodeled, I hear, and it's taking a little longer than expected. So he didn't have all the exact numbers for the complaints this year, but he got through about five of them and said there was one complaint during one of the events, and it was for a guy yelling, or somebody yelling out of a truck. So it may not even be, but it was in front of Alverno. So it records because that's the address that it was at, so many less complaints since this, since uh February, so.
Great. Any other reports? All right, Planning and Community Preservation Department reports.
Here, I just want to um follow up on the Alverno um neighbors' meeting on Tuesday, five-thirty. Um, three of the residents joined the meeting, and then we have the Alverno administrators and then Commissioner Simcock and um Chief Barianto, Assistant Planner Juan, and I attended the meeting. And um, it is correct that uh we received far less complaint and then far less participants in the neighbors' meeting. And they are looking to bring the Villa CUP back to Planning Commission for their annual review on October sixteen. And their master plan CUP will come to Planning Commission as well next year in April. Um, I do not have any agenda for the following meeting in um October's, the first meeting in October, and the second meeting in October would be the Alverno's Villa CUP Annual Report.
Are we holding out hope that we'll have something for the October second meeting, or should we plan on not having that?
Um, I, I would propose that we um cancel the meeting because we did not receive um substantial materials from um applications from the resident.
Okay.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any other business from anybody? Then I guess we will adjourn to our norm, our next regularly scheduled meeting of October sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. Thank you.
Thank you.